Good afternoon, everyone. Great, so you all can hear me. Thought I was gonna have to use my outside voice. Thank you all for being here tonight. Welcome to the work session for the Board of Education for January, and I'd like to ask you all to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And I'm gonna turn the program over to Mr. Palais.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Board Chairperson Moore Lee, Vice Chairperson Kramer, members of the Charles County Board of Education, and our Superintendent Dr. Navarro. I invite you all to step out front to greet and congratulate our student athletes and coaches who have earned the title of state champion for the fall 2024 sports season. To be a state champion, one needs to demonstrate exceptional athletic ability in their chosen sport, coupled with a strong work ethic, dedication to training, a strategic game plan, mental resilience, and the ability to consistently perform at a high level against tough competition, all while navigating the pressures of a state championship tournament. Please welcome Mr. Douglas Dolan, Principal, and Mr. Chris Butler, Athletic Director of La Plata High School.
Thank you. On behalf of the members of the Board of Education, Mr. Power Lee, Principal Dolan, and La Plata High School, it is my pleasure to recognize our unified tennis team. La Plata has previously won seven Unified Track State Championships, one Unified Bocce State Championship, and thanks to these hard-working student athletes, La Plata High School now has their first-ever Unified Tennis State Championship. The team has two outstanding and dedicated coaches, Ms. Jamie Harpold and Mr. Earl Swan. Ladies and gentlemen, please join me in recognizing these outstanding student athletes. That's Mr. Swan and Ms. Harpold. First, we have team member Nick Agor, Margaret Allen, Dana Beasley, Claire Bright, Lilly Goff, Austin Henigan, Brianna Hernandez-Carino, Lilly Hodgson, Ms. Sophie Hunt, Lauren McChesney, Sarah Owens, and Daisy Rojas, the members of the La Plata High School Unified Tennis State Championship Team. Congratulations.
Next, we have, please welcome, Mr. Darnell Russell, Principal, and Ms. Thornton, Athletic Director of McDonough High School.
Thank you very much. It is my esteemed pleasure and honor to introduce to you our state champion cheerleaders and take this moment to, if you have not been to a county cheer championship, it is here tomorrow night, 6:00 PM. And come out, it's an amazing time. The student athletes are incredible, so I can guarantee you will enjoy your time here. So, without further ado, on behalf of Mr. Russell and the McDonough Administration, I would like to introduce you our state champion cheerleaders led by Coach Tony Williams. Our cheerleaders Leah Bruce, Nolani Green, Michaela Harris, Aliyah Lynn, Jalen Matthews, Rihanna Morris, Julie Ogline, Kizaya Reeves, Candace Roberts, Deja Sally, Chloee Spitzer Wyatt, and Jordan Tyler.
And finally, please welcome Mr. Daniel Capel, Principal, and Mr. Andrew Shattuck, Athletic Director of North Point High School.
Thank you, Mr. Paulie. On behalf of myself and Mr. Capel, I'm very honored to introduce our 2024 State Championship Football Team. Before I introduce them, I'd just like to share mine and Mr. Capel's appreciation, not just for the wins on the field, but for the culture that Coach Kondo and his coaching staff have established. When we talk about high school athletics, the goals we have are to win, to have fun, to create great experiences for our kids. But the main reason we do it is to provide them with lessons that they can use in life. And this coaching staff does a stellar job in all of that. So congratulations first and foremost for that. Dr. Navarro and esteemed board members, it's my pleasure to introduce our state championship football team. First, our coaching staff. Our head coach is Bill Kondo. Next is Tracy Easton, George Hall, Malik Lawrence, and Mike Rucker. And our players, Alejandro Aguilar, Cyrus Binca Coker, Jody Berrios, Khalil Bagman, Arnel Bland, Latrelle Bolding, Tyson Bowman, Xavier Bowman, Damian Brown, Jacob Burris, Ellis Daniels, Victor Daramola, Nathaniel Dates, Caleb Davis, Logan Das, Nasir Eetman, Juan El Amin, Josiah Eldridge Scott, Kyler Ferreira, Marcus Fleming, Terrence Ford, Jalen Fuller, Alonzo Gardner, Seth Gatherz, Paxton Griffin, Noah Hager, Savion Hall, Irvin Hamlet, Kyle Hart, Timothy Iguay Allen, Josiah Jackson, Russell Jackson, Antonio Jeter, Langston Joseph, Brian Lee, Isaac Marsh, Amari Mason, Joshua Mayo, Charles McHugh, Sean McFadden, Mikael Minnick, Brandon Morales, A.J. Moses, Jirei Ojoade, Nicholas Owens, Drew Pearson, Tarien Poole, Jaden Proctor, Noah Priot, Nathaniel Queen, Aeneas Rogers, Jalen Rogers, Alfred Roscoe, Donovan Russell, Rasan Sanders, Philip Sykes, Landon Smith, Christian Solomon, Malachi Tate, Jordan Taylor, Nathan Templeton, Toby Thompson, Justin Tench, Bruce Torres, Ethan Washington, and lastly, Javion Watson. Thank you.
All right, that was... Can you hear me? Okay. That was great. Moving on to the Superintendent's Proposed Fiscal Year 2025-2026 Operating Budget, presented by Ms. Acton, CFO.
Good afternoon. Yep, I just wanna... Joining me this afternoon is our Budget Manager.
Just wanna make sure that Karen Acton's mic is on. Mike, can you try?
Yep. Yep. All right. Joining me this afternoon in this presentation is our Budget Manager, Ms. Sherri Fisher-Davis. Next, first slide. Our budget supports CCPS's strategic priorities. Priority one is student learning and achievement. Priority two is access and opportunities. And priority three is culture and climate. This slide shows the Maryland County Comparison Cost per Pupil as of fiscal year 2023, which is the most updated information that we can get at this time. And you can see that the Maryland State average is $18,551. Charles County ranks 20th out of 24 LEAs at $16,786 at that time.
I'm sorry, Ms. Acton. If I may, just for the ease of the board that's following along, I know they can't see the slides directly. If we can just call out the title of the slides as we go through them? Okay. Or the page number.
So, I'll say next slide each time, if that works, and then everyone will know to flip. Does that work? All righty. Next slide. So this slide shows the full-time equivalent student enrollment statistics for Charles County. FY 2026 budget, we are expecting enrollment to reach $27,370. It was $27,005 this year, and you can see that we're steadily increasing enrollment. Next slide. This slide shows you the student enrollment for special populations. You can also see on this slide that while our enrollment is increasing, we also are seeing some increases in these areas, the farms, the special ed, and ELL students. Next slide. So this slide is showing you how much revenue we need to accomplish the budget that we're putting before you. We have an increase of 11% to the county, $24,728, and a 2.6% increase in funding from the state, which is almost $7 million, $6.9 million. The state funding that we're showing you here is the preliminary numbers that they have released. So the total revenue increase that we're asking for is $31,700, roughly 700. It's a 6.3% increase. Next slide. So on the state funding, which is approximately a $7 million increase, they allocate funding to us based on student enrollment and assessment of the county's wealth in free and reduced meals. FTE enrollments increased from the previous fiscal year by 365 students, or 1.35%. State compensatory aid is based on eligible free and reduced-priced meal students. Farms enrollment for FY '25 is $12,624, which is a decrease of $1,404 from the previous year. Compensatory aid and guaranteed tax base are projected to decline by $5.3 million and $3.2 million, respectively. And again, that's because our farms' numbers have decreased, which works into the formula and gives us a decrease. Next slide. The county funding. We have a request of $25.3 million. The county's revenue sources are based primarily on property and income taxes, and county funding is a formula established based on Maryland Maintenance of Effort requirements. And what that means is that the county is required by law to give us the per-pupil funding that they gave us the previous year, at a minimum. The Charles County Commissioners funded CCPS $231.4 million in FY 2025. The total county funding request for FY 2026 is $25.3 million more than the current fiscal year, or an 11% increase. Next slide. So this slide shows you that we have been very fortunate in Charles County in that the county has, at least in recent history, has funded us more than maintenance of effort. But while they have done that, our share of the local funding has decreased. And, you know, that, they... They need to balance all the needs of fire and rescue, police, and all of that. So even though we got a very nice increase in 2024 and 2025, the percentage of the funding that we received at the county budget is going down. Next slide. So the next slides are showing you the expenditures that we have in our budget. So we have mandatory cost increase, which is healthcare costs, 5%; bus contracts, 3%; teachers' pension, 21%. The next group of items is showing you in FY 2025, which is our current budget, we were able to open up our Waldorf pre-K facility, but we did not have full funding for that. We were able to cut other items from our budget on a temporary one-year basis in order to accomplish that. But now, in order to be fully funded, we're gonna need those funds. So you see that there. And also, Posota had increases... And Posota is our charter school. And it had increases in staffing. So those are also listed here. So the total mandatory cost increases is $10,077,884. We have table agreements with both of our unions, EACC and AFSMI, and that assumption, based on those agreements, is $13,250. Next slide. So next, we have some blueprint implementation costs. So there are some pass-through items. So we get funding from the state, but we have to pay it out and use it in the manner that they have asked us to. The first item you see there is Workforce Development Board. It's $86,433. And then our concentration of poverty schools and the increases that go with that. So while we get an increase in our revenue, we have to spend it out in this way, in this manner, for these schools. So our total blueprint implementation cost is $2,005,000. So now, we get to the new request for this budget. In order to provide good service with our Oracle ERP system that we have implemented, we are in need of adding some additional positions. The work is different with Oracle than it was with our I-Series, and it's requiring different responsibilities to be done, which require additional staff. So you'll see there's an HR generalist, a benefits manager, a payroll supervisor, and a database administrator that we are in need of. Our instructional increases are listed next. An increase to school counselors at the high school level, staff growth and retention specialist, a community schools secretary. As we increase in the number of community schools we have, we are in need of some support there. And international baccalaureate program is also a request that we have. We have some... And next are some non-instructional increases, and these are to kind of right-size budgets. We need to increase HR overtime and HR hourly wages budget. And we need to add a support administrator for the board. We need to increase the board travel and food and the international teachers' fee. Just one thing I'll add about the board information. When the number of members of the board was increased, we did increase the salaries so that we could cover that, but we did not increase the additional expense that would go with that, such as for travel and for food. So those total other budget changes are about $1,007,000. Next slide, please. And then our big expenditure. As most people know, we're opening a new elementary school. And with that comes additional staffing and operating costs that we need to operate that school. And that is $6,005,000 that we need for that. So those total other budget changes is a total of... Is that $10 million? $10,007,000. Yep. Next slide, please. So we know that this is an aggressive budget ask. So we have looked at ways that we could possibly save and make the ask a little more reasonable for the county. So we have adjusted the staffing class size ratios at the middle and high school, in fourth and fifth grade, which totals about $1.8 million. And then we also have a reduction, which is for our non-recurring additional accounting funding, which was from last year. So that brings our total budget to $537,904,000. Next slide, please. So as mentioned previously, we have table agreements with our unions, and that is approximately $13,250,000. We're estimating for those increases. Next slide. We have mandatory student transportation increases of $1.4 million. This is for retiring buses and pay increases for our contracted bus drivers in attendance. We currently operate a fleet total of 384. 315 is contractual, and 69 is owned by CCPS. So the increase does include purchasing new buses to replace retired buses greater than 15 years, which we are required to do. Next slide, please. We did talk about the mandatory cost increase for healthcare, $2.4 million. We are self-insured on healthcare, and those costs continue to increase every year. So we are needing to adjust that budget line. Our bus contracts, we are estimating about $1.4 million for that cost. And the teachers' pension is $2.5 million increase. Next slide, please. As I mentioned, we had made budget cuts last year, one-time budget cuts in order to fund items that were not fully funded last year. The ELC in Waldorf, $2.6 million. And we had some additional staffing, a human resource specialist, position control specialist, HCM, system administrator, cybersecurity engineer. And we also had lowered our short-term disability insurance line. All of that is about $774,000. And then for the additional staff at Posota, that's $471,000. Next, we are talking about the blueprint for Maryland's future cost. We, as mentioned, the Workforce Development Board, that's $86,433. Next slide. Our concentration of poverty increases for our schools, total $2,459,000. We have four new schools this year, Mount Hope, William B. Wade, Barnhart, and J.C. Parks. Next slide, please. So other cost requests that we are asking for is an HR generalist, as I mentioned. These are Oracle's support positions that are needed, a benefits manager, a payroll supervisor, and a data administrator. Next slide, please. We are also asking to increase our school counselors and asking for a staff growth and retention specialist, a community schools secretary, and to begin the international baccalaureate program. It's a development of that program. Next slide, please. And these are the items that we need to improve on our budget line from where we are now. Increase the overtime budget by $8,000 and HR hourly wages budget of $120,000. Support administrator for the board, $130,000. Board travel and food, $13,000. And international teachers' fee of $170,000. Next slide, please. And then we have Margaret J. Thornton, our elementary school. The staff positions are $6,089,000, and the operation costs are $374,000, which are ongoing. So the staff positions are the remaining positions that are needed after we have reallocated 13 staff positions from other schools. Next slide, please. So the budget reductions that I mentioned, we have $1.8 million, which is to increase class size and the ratios for those. And then you'll see that we had a one-time startup cost for Early Learning Center of $250,000. 250,000 and a TV production equipment upgrade of 362,000. Next slide, please. And I'll let Dr. Navarro talk about this slide.
Thank you, Karen. We're going to add another table up here for the next time we're here. So if I may, I just want to remind the board where we are right now in terms of the budget that you have before you. So MSD every year releases the dollars, the funding to all of the LEAs, and this year is a little bit different, I think, than in previous years. Funding was released to all of the LEAs, and these are the numbers that we're utilizing to bring forward the budget before you. However, I want to remind you that there's a couple of complex situations happening simultaneously. The governor issued his budget, the state-level budget, and there's a bill that he proposes that I don't believe yet has a fiscal note attached to it. It's the Excellence in Maryland Public Schools Act. And in it, it delineates several initiatives and bodies of work that have costs associated with them. The funding for such costs come out of the blueprint dollars, and some of them are scheduled to be redirected from current allocations to the schools up to the state level for different initiatives. So it's going to be important that we follow, this is a proposed bill. It'll have its time in Annapolis for hearings, it'll have a fiscal note, just like any other bills, and we don't quite yet know what the implications could be. But we estimated, we made an estimate based on the information we do have right here. And so what this slide in front of you shows is potential additional reductions in funding to the school system if all of the requests itemized in this bill come to fruition, as best we can, we can say today. I don't have a fiscal note attached to this bill, so I can't for sure give you this, but Cherry and Karen have been working diligently to see that there could be additional possible reductions coming forward. I did want to also remind the board, the blueprint is law, and it has the funding already committed in law. So any changes to try to move funding from where it is stipulated in Maryland law right now requires changes to the law. And so right now, the funding that we come to you with is a number that I, I'm a little concerned that it's not the final number that we have to work with. And thereby, there will be, I think, additional pressures to, frankly, the local county budgets to be able to make up more of the deficit of what we are asking for at this point. So I say all that to just remind the board that this is, you know, we always come to you first, and then when we have our next meeting where you can ask us more questions than you might today, and I, we always say, we're going to come back with tweaking of some numbers. This year, I'm worried because I don't think we'll be tweaking numbers. I think we'll be making lots of different changes depending on what happens in Annapolis with proposed bills. So this discussion on, on funding is a continuous process that may linger longer than what it usually lingers for us. I do want to publicly thank the, the office of the county's budget, because we've been in conversations for us to be able to get a sense of the budget that is fiscally responsible, but also that delineates the needs of our school system and what we bring forward to you. And it is an aggressive budget ask for this year. But we are also, we were expecting, if you recall, last year was one of the lowest percentage funded in the blueprint. We were only funded, I think it was 1.7% increase in FY '25. And we were looking forward to the funding in FY '26 because that percentage was scheduled to be about 4.9%, 4.97% for the blueprint funding from the state support share. And the state has, you know, the support share of the blueprint law has a double effect on us because it delineates what the state supports, and then it also paves the way for what the local, locals support. This year, that 4.97% that we were looking forward to is looking more like, at this point, about 3.1%. So there was quite a bit of a decrease. And then I just want to alert you that that's, that potentially, that's an even further decrease. And if we, depending if bills pass, and if they do, this particular slide delineates where we could see additional funds in, cuts in funding. One other note, I think it is important for us to be reminded that when there is, for example, the teacher pension was cut at the state level, the proportion that the state would pay, and it was said that it would go down and it would be covered by the locals. Well, if you notice, in our budget request, we already put it in at 2.5 million additional. It's, it's going to go right through the local and come right back to us. We're going to have to pay it. At the end of the day, it's our budget that's going to have to pay it. And so these cuts feel almost double in some ways because they have a state implication and they also have a local implication. And so I just wanted to give that context before we're open to answer any questions. Thank you.
So I think we have to share this microphone on this table, but you guys have two. So if there are any questions, Ms. Smith, and then Mr. Hancock.
Yes, well, I'm not certain if my mic is on, so I'm just going to talk really loud and hopefully it's working. Just grab it. It's showtime. Okay, so, Dr. Navarro, I wanted to start with what you were just sharing with us in terms of almost feeling as if we're going through double cuts. The governor did share several weeks ago that there were going to be some austere fiscal times approaching Maryland and that everyone was going to have to tighten their belt in some way. So I don't know that this is a surprise to many of us, although I think what is a surprise is that we may have kind of a new education bill that's being introduced that might siphon off some of the blueprint funding. That is concerning, very much so. And I wonder if it would be appropriate to ask our legislative delegation, our Charles County delegation, to offer a briefing to us in terms of what the bill currently includes and how they're thinking about it? Would love to hear from, you know, our delegates, from our state senator, in terms of what's on their desk and sort of what they're hearing from others kind of in Annapolis around this particular bill.
Absolutely. So I will say Delegate Patterson invited myself and the other two superintendents for Southern Maryland to join her, for the Southern Maryland delegation meeting, and I believe I have it in my calendar. And I, I want to look, yes, and I, it's, it's for Friday, February the 7th, and we'll make sure that the board also has access to the link. We are going to be bringing up some of these issues. I am hoping that we have a fiscal note to the governor's bill, proposed bill. My understanding is that that whole entire proposed bill will, will have its own hearing, and I will make sure that the board also gets access to when that hearing is. And I am almost certain that the organization that represents you, the school board members, as well as the organization that represents me and the organization that represents teachers, we will all be there testifying as well. But I will make sure that the Friday, the 7th, is on the board's agenda because that is the conversation with our Southern delegation. It is the three counties, but it is around education.
Thank you. I had a few questions for Ms. Acton, if I may. I would love to point out the slide number, but it's going to cause me to flip a great deal. There was a part in the presentation where you noted that the guaranteed tax base had gone down, and I just wanted to know more about, like, what exactly is the guaranteed tax base and why did it decrease? If I can find, it was on the state funding slide. It was the, the final bullet point. Compensatory aid and guaranteed tax base are projected to decline.
So it is the state funding slide that has, it says a $7 million increase, and the last paragraph says compensatory aid and guaranteed tax base are projected to decline by 5.3 million and 3.2 million, respectively. So it has to do with the farms numbers and also the wealth, and it's of the county. And the wealth, you know, we are basically pitted against the other LEAs, and where we fall in that all goes into the formulas as to how much funding we get. It's all relative, yes.
It's all relative, okay. I may have some follow-up questions at another point, but that's, the initial response is helpful. Also was noted that middle and high school staffing adjustments were projected to be made in order to help us with our shortfall?
Yes.
Or at least to, you know, diminish the blow when we go to request funding from the commissioners. What exactly does that mean?
So I have to let Dr. Navarro answer that.
So what we did is we tiered schools based on the percentage of farms and the needs that they would have. So for example, we looked at currently the allocated class sizes for regular, for regular classrooms in high school are staffed at a 1 to 30 ratio. That doesn't mean that all of our classes are 1 to 30. Actually, we ran the data, and we have a lot of classes that are under and way under. What that does is, for the schools that have the highest third farms range, that number would not change. We would not change the 30 to 1 ratio. For schools that are sort of in our middle tier, that number would increase by two students. And students who are very low, classes that are very low-impacted, the number could increase up to 34 students in a class. I will say that when we ran the numbers of how many actual classrooms we are right now at a 1 to 30 ratio, we were not quite, we don't have a lot of classrooms there. And then the other thing that we looked at is classes where we have less than 15 students, whether we would offer that. So those go up by two students, depending, you know, two students for sort of our tier two schools, which are sort of our middle-impacted schools, our highly-impacted schools, their ratios would not change for any grade level. And then our least-impacted schools, the numbers would go up by four students.
So Ms. Smith, if I could, in the PDF that has all the words, on page 15 at the top, it does give you an explanation of the guaranteed tax base. It's encourages, it's basically so that low-wealth jurisdictions maintain and increase local education tax effort. These funds are available to jurisdictions with wealth per pupil below 80% of the statewide wealth per pupil. So it is a function of the wealth throughout the state and where we fall in the per-pupil amount compared to others.
No, that, that explanation is very helpful. I think from an average citizen's perspective, you know, we're seeing the development, we're seeing, you know, the growth, we're seeing, you know, sort of new people coming into our county, and it feels as if we are on the verge of being affluent. And then to be told that our tax base actually is decreasing, it just seems a little counter to what we see visibly, so.
And, and one thing to keep in mind is that, you know, we're one of the growing counties as far as enrollment, but as other counties are not growing, if their funding stays the same with what they're getting from the county, then their, their per pupil is going to go up because they have fewer students. So it's somewhat, you know, it, it comes into play because of our growing enrollment and others that are not necessarily growing.
And to, thank you, Ms. Acton, and to Dr. Navarro's explanation in terms of the class size changes. Of course, looking at this from a parent perspective, whenever parents hear that their child's class may increase, even if it's by one, two, four, there's a concern there. I'm sure from our teachers' perspectives, and I know you've taken all of this into account as well, just thinking about what that does to classroom management in terms of adding an additional two or three kids to a classroom. So I'm not sure how we would explain this further to the public in terms of the impact on our budget and the rationale for having to make these tough decisions, but I think it's worth us trying to find some talking points just to help, again, parents and educators better understand the need for some of the changes should this budget come through to fruition.
Yes, and I think, you know, one of my biggest talking points is, again, this is an aggressive ask. There are some modifications to staffing due to the fact that we were expecting, because of what's written in law, that we were going to be able to get additional state funding. The, the ratios do increase, and actually, they increase, you know, by two students several schools. And my concern is that, you know, that, that has an impact. If you're in a classroom and you have more students, that has an, an impact for staff and that has an impact for students in those classrooms. And so it is, we're trying to be as, we're trying to make the numbers work in a year where I have lots of concerns about how these numbers are, are working out.
And my final question before I yield the mic, is, it was mentioned that for the opening for Margaret Thornton, the elementary school, that we had reallocated 13 positions from other schools. Can you give us a sense of how those determinations were made? Were they just additional staff? How do we determine the move for those individuals?
So we look at it based on the, on the feeder patterns that the board approved. So we look at schools, and we look at how many students are moving, and then we go back and estimate. It's never perfect because, you know, you don't, in some schools, you'll have 19 kids move, and a classroom is really a classroom of 24, but you're still going to move a staff member because of it. It's enough to cause sort of the ripple effect. So we've gone, we're in the process of going to those schools where students are going to move, are projected to move from, and look at the staffing and talk to staffing from those schools. And so right now, it is projected that the totality of that would mean about 13 FTE movements from various schools.
Thank you.
All right, thank you for the presentation. I appreciate it. My biggest question, actually, Ms. Smith touched on it. Before I get into that, though, I do just want to take this time to say, you know, I've been on this board for six years. We've had some lean years, we've had some good years. The last two years before the last one were actually pretty good. But I, I do want to say, the writing's kind of been on the wall here with the budget from the state for the last several months. And, you know, I know our county commissioners are probably listening, and, and they've really stepped up in years past. I know the last budget, the first real budget of implementing the blueprint, the county had some holes to fill. They didn't fill them all the way, but they did a pretty good job of helping us as much as they could, and it looks like that burden's going to continue to grow on them. And I just want to thank our board of commissioners, all of them, for, for being willing and open to work with us, to fund us as much as we can. This year's budget, it just seems like, you can almost feel it in the room, it's almost a little bit gloomy, and you can, you can cut it with a knife almost. So I think, at the end of the day, we're going to have some tough decisions to make. I hope that it's, it's not that bad. But I wanted to start by thanking our county commissioners for, for trying to help us as much as they can. My biggest concern, Ms. Smith touched on it, and you did elaborate on what that ratio would look like with the middle and high school staff-to-student ratio, increasing that, and also in fourth and fifth grade. That concerns me, even if it's not necessarily farm students. We look at our emails every day on the disciplinary issues and the vaping issues that have been daily in multiple schools, it seems like, and it, it's scary to think, you know, and those are the middle and high schools, we need more staffing. And not that we're reducing staffing, but we're putting more of a burden on the existing staff that we have. So that, that kind of is a hard pill to swallow. When we look at all of the work that's already on the backs of the staff that we have, not just in middle and high school, Lord knows, elementary staff are taxed beyond what they can handle as well. But when we look at the issues that we're forced to deal with and that we see every day, that, that just really concerns me. And also to look at the budget and, and... And also to look at the budget and we see the issues that face us. And because the times are so tight, we can't even hardly address those issues that we're faced with. And I think that adjusting that ratio could make the problems we face even worse. But you did elaborate on that and I appreciate that. That's my biggest concern that I see. I personally would like to see if we could work around the budget a little bit more in a way where we don't have to do that. Because I just don't see anything good coming out of, thirty students in a class is already too many. If you put thirty-four in a class, that's really asking a lot of one staff member, one teacher to do. So, but thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Y'all asked some of the questions y'all had already stated. I'm not going to focus on, you made a well argument for that. I just want to think about, you remember when we got the bill, the blueprint funded? How we all went to Napolis, we fought for it, that camaraderie around it. We made sure that every delegate, not just our, but every delegate heard that. Now that we hear that we did that hard work and now money's going to come forward, I think we need to focus and go back and do the same thing. Because money coming from our students, our future, we got to put this in perspective. This is the future. Every time there's a budget cut, the first thing they go to is education. And it blows my mind, I can't understand why. But we need to stand fast and say that we're not going to take that. We have to do that same fight again. And I was so proud that you talked about the workforce development for our middle schools and high schools. That is big because the earlier we get them to thinking about what they're going to contribute to in the future, what their career is going to be, that's better for us. Because when they graduate, we know that they will be striving for something instead of trying to get to high school and trying to figure it out. It's hard to figure it out, but when you have a base where you can be able to do it from, it's easier for our students. And the last thing I'm going to touch on is the blueprint implementation cost for our, for the, for our, for the commissioners. Just making sure we let them know that we thank them. And I thank you, Mr. Hancock, for thanking them, and we all thank them. But I want them to make sure that when we're thinking about this budget, it's not a budget that we dreamed about or we're asking for. This is something that makes sure that our teachers have the resources, they have to do it. Our students have the resources. And also Dr. Navara has it because she's the overall person for the school and making sure that she has the necessary resources. And we know that teachers are a dime a dozen right now. But that doesn't stop us from making sure that our youth, our children, the future of Charles County will not get what they done. Because when we grew up, we, the school did us good. So I want to make sure that momentum continues for our students. So just making sure that we tell, you know, and I'm going to remind the governor again, the main thing that made me look at you, Governor Moore, was when you said, no child left behind. That was a powerful statement. And I think that right there got a lot of us thinking about you because you then were the first that said that, we want to take care of all of Maryland, but our students and our children are what we need to put first. That made me think that you was going to put education up front. So just, I just want you, I'm pleading to you, Governor Moore, I want you to make sure that you think about this bill that you putting forth. Because education, you campaigned on, you stated it over and over again, and it's in our heads. So I want to make sure that you understand the validity behind when you want to take funding from this law that you signed into law, that you said that we want to do, and you stood behind the teacher union and make sure that it happens. So we ask you to caution that. And I'm getting a little motion, so I'm going to step back here.
Thank you, Ms. Butler-Washington. Ms. Thomas?
Thank you. Thanks so much for this, Ms. Acton and Dr. Navarro, putting this together. I think this provides a good perspective. A couple of things that I would like, I think it will be helpful if people understand the addition of the four schools that we have that are community schools. Is, are there any funding implications for those? And I know that you have it listed here, but I think it's really important to understand what kind of impact that means for the community schools. Because the more community schools we have, those definitions mean something. And I think it's important. So if you could just expound upon that for the public to understand those community schools that increase and what that means for us.
So currently, we have ten community schools. And the funding works, as the funding comes in to us, we have to send that right back out to the community schools. So we're adding four additional schools for next year. And they're required to have a coordinator and a, like a health practitioner. So for example, Mount Hope will be one of the new schools. They're receiving funding of two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And that has to cover the coordinator and the health practitioner. The ten other schools will get this increase that you see. But the total increase is two point four million. That's coming in from the state and that has to go right back to those community schools. We can't use it for anything else.
Thank you.
Can I add?
Sure.
So just for your information as well, one of the things in the governor's bill is the ability and the flexibility also for some of this community school funding to be able to be utilized, to do some central organizing. And we are supportive of that so that, because there's a lot of coordination. And I think they're also looking at, you know, what I will say is, there is, there is, there's language out there that I would call curative legislation, which is, we've done the blueprint for three years now. We've implemented. And the superintendents, for example, put out a paper on our best thinking on how to make things better, knowing that we've implemented. And one of the things that we did put out there, and we are happy that several folks have heard us on this, is the community schools is a wonderful resource to do wraparound services for schools impacted by poverty. It is written in law, at which point, every year, the funding goes, depending on the level of poverty of the school and how much that would be increased every year. As you know, the governor is slowing that down a little bit. But he's also adding language that allows some flexibility in how the funding can be utilized. And that we are grateful for because it was written very specific around having the community school coordinator and the fundings could only be used in this way. And there had to be a health resource person that had certain degrees that you could only hire in the schools. Now we're going to be able to see some flexibility on this. But most of these funds, as Sherri said, are passed through directly to the schools. And if you recall, the purpose of the blueprint is to target populations and have those dollars go as much to school-level implementation as possible.
Thank you, Dr. Navarro. And I specifically asked that question because I wanted to kind of inform the public that, you know, as, if you, you know, I encourage parents to really dig into the blueprint. I know it's not, you know, the most popular topic if you worried about, you know, diapers and, you know, school extracurricular activities. But the blueprint is very prescriptive on how we get money and how we spend it. And the community schools is an example of that. And I think it's really important. There's also a lot of, you know, for teachers, for those that are supporting our schools in different ways, there's also lots of impacts to them. So when we talk about things like, you know, English language learners, special education, you know, there was funds that are earmarked, there were always shortfalls. We will continue to see those. And so we are going to have to be creative about how we do that. And also, we, as the school board, we are lobbying, as you heard Ms. Butler-Washington talk about how we're working with our delegation and those to support the funding. But parents, you too have a voice. And so we really, we really need parents to step up because we're working hard to balance a budget that there is really not a balance. I mean, it's just the honest and most frank way to say it, there's not a balance. So a lot of my colleagues ask other questions, but there's one that I do want to talk about because I think at some point, parents are going to ask the question and I think we need to put it out there in a way that they can understand. Non-instructional budget increases. There's lots of people who are going to say, why are you making these increases? Because it's not going directly to students. I think it's important to note, and Dr. Navarro or Ms. Acton, if you could talk about this, Charles County Public Schools is the largest employer in the county?
Well, it depends. We go back and forth with Indian, with the base. Yes, I argue that we are. It depends at which stage they're in, but yes, one and two.
So given that point, it's a corporation, right? There is an infrastructure that is required in order to be able to support that. We have to support the teachers and payroll and healthcare and all those kind of things. So I do think that we need to make sure that we help people understand it's as lean as possible. And also, to be quite, you know, frank, if we can be more lean, I think we should try to figure out ways. But I also think it's really important for people to understand. For example, you know, people will argue, why you need a new system? What do you need Oracle for? Ms. Acton, how long was that system in place before you had to replace it?
Caveman days. I mean, it is ancient.
Like, it had been around for thirty years. So just imagine if you had, you know, still using these archaic systems in order to do work. It means you have to do twice the work to get the production needed for.
It has the black and green screen, the DOS.
Right, it was DOS-based, so anybody who's a techy knows that. So I just, you know, I know that there are things in here that are hard to swallow. And I know there are things that we're having to make a balance on. And then the other thing is our teachers, right? Our teachers deserve the pay increase that the blueprint promised. I mean, just be frank, they deserve the increase that the blueprint promised. And we, as a county, we're the front runners in saying, yes, we believe that we need to invest in our teachers. And this funding is making it difficult for us to be able to continue to support the teachers. So, you know, again, parents, we need your help, you know, to go and ask those questions too. Because this also, if we can't get the budget funding or we can't support the healthcare, pensions are moving, that means that we are also degradating the ability for more people to want to come into teaching. If you're not going to be paid well, if you don't have good benefits, you're not going to want to come teach. So we need your support, parents. And we also need our commissioner's support to continue to make sure we're supporting the very, you know, the apex of teaching, which is you can't teach students without teachers. So I think that's really critical too. And I would like to encourage people to get into the blueprint and also talk to your commissioners, go at the state level and make sure that you're supporting what we're trying to do for our students. Thanks.
Anybody else? Sam? Mr. Verk?
Thank you. A question I had was on the International Baccalaureate Program. The one hundred and fifty thousand dollars going towards that. What exactly is going to happen next year? And what are the phases of implementation looking like for that?
So we're going to seed our first IB program in the county. It will, it is scheduled to be seeded here at St. Charles High School. And the way you start an IB program is you begin by doing a contract with International Baccalaureate and beginning to seed the program. So our, this budget shows our intent to bring IB to the district. The first year would be a learning year. We would have to work with IB and look at our capacity, how many teachers would have to grow. And then we would begin full implementation with a cohort of ninth graders in FY twenty-seven. So this would be a planning year, make sure that we pay the fees to become a district that houses an IB diploma track. We would be working on the logistics because you can have, you can take AP classes and do an IB diploma. So we'd have to do the sequencing of that. That would be the work that we would entail. We would start this year, this coming year, so that we can take a look at and offer options in FY twenty-seven for that freshman cohort and build it upwards.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions from board members that have not had any questions yet? Okay, I had a couple of things. So Ms. Acton, I want to go back to slide seven that talks about state funding. And just to be clear, not only for myself or for the public's benefit, but for myself, when we're talking about Ms. Smith's question about compensatory aid and the guaranteed tax base. So I understand that it's related to the county's wealth. So just in the simplest terms, though, are we saying that the county's wealth has increased? And so that's why the guaranteed tax base is being reduced? Or is it the opposite? That's a good question. And the formula isn't as straightforward as that. So I can give you a better answer. I'll have to look at the information more closely. Okay. Because it's not as straightforward as whether we have more wealth or less. Or not, okay. But I'll get you that information. Okay, perfect, thank you. And as a follow-up to that, so on the same slide, we're talking about an increase in enrollment, which that's clear, right? And we've had an increase in enrollment since, I think, twenty twenty-two, right? Twenty twenty-one was our last decrease in enrollment. So that's been consistent over the last several years. But then when we look at farms numbers, so on that third bullet, you're talking about farms enrollment for twenty twenty-five was decreased. But one of the previous slides shows that we've had, the one that talked about over ten years, we've had an actual increase. So are we just saying, over the last ten years, farms has increased? The total percentage has increased in our schools. But over this most recent previous year, there was a decrease? Okay, I just wanted to understand that.
And I just want to add, that decrease for farms was about five million dollars from last year to this year. So it's a drop of fourteen hundred students, give or take. That equated to about five million dollars.
Okay, so fourteen hundred students equaled five million dollars. That's significant. And one other item that I want to mention is that our CEP schools are not required to fill out the farms application. So this was a concern with the CEP schools. Right. That, you know, those children are eating for free. So the parents do not have to fill out the application. So it can adversely affect our numbers because of that. Right, I was going to ask about that too. So just a note to parents, make sure that you fill out the form. I know we say this over and over again, even if you don't think you qualify, even if your student is already receiving, you know, free and reduced meals. Because that was going to be one of my questions, is that, is it because we've had a decrease in, or do you believe it's been because of a decrease in the applications being submitted? Because we don't know if, you know, a family qualifies if we don't have the application, which could also impact our funding, correct? Correct, and, you know, on a little different note that kind of goes with that is, you know, our negative lunch balances are significantly increased. Right. And so if those parents haven't filled out the form, then we're showing them as needing to pay. So I think it's all related. But there's no motivation necessarily for them to fill out the form if they're in a CEP school. Right. We do, they do count the direct certification that goes through. But, you know, this was a big drop. Fourteen hundred is a lot. Yeah. Especially as our, you know, enrollment increased. Okay, okay, thank you for that. And then my next question was about the, I think it's on, I thought it was twenty-two. Give me one second. The Office, I think it's called Office Budget Request. I don't, I might be saying that wrong. Sorry, I'm trying to figure out if it was on that first slide with the detailed budget. Yes, my apologies. So not the presentation that you just gave, but on the budget detail, the other attachment. So on page twenty-two, the Office Requests. This says, Office Budget Requests Provide Enhancement for Current Programs. Below is a summary, et cetera. So are these programs that are included and fully funded in this budget? Or these are potential, okay, can you explain that? Sure, these are the priority lists that come from the schools that say they need X, Y, and Z, and we have not been able to fund them. So we always include that because sometimes the county is able to, and Jake does do that, where he goes through the list and he says, I can probably give you one-time funding for X, Y, or Z. But, you know, we'd like to have all that money, but we don't have it. Gotcha, and that's important because that adds up to fifteen million dollars if I'm looking at this correctly. So those are just requests that have, over however long, have been made by our schools that we've not been able to fund. Well, this is the current list. So we send out, we ask them each budget cycle.
Well, this is the current list, so we send out, we ask them each budget cycle, you know, what their, and to prioritize the items that they need.
Okay.
And then, we have a meeting with Dr. Navarro, and, you know, we try to figure out what we can do and what we can't do. So, this list is, is what was not funded.
Okay, okay, great.
Yeah, I just want to add, some, in previous years, in better economic years, people have asked us, what happens with end-of-year funding, right? So, we don't, let's say it's a year where we staff at ninety-nine percent, we don't have all of our staffing. And at the end of the year, we have some end-of-year funding left over because we had some openings that we carried throughout the year. And folks say, what do you do with that funding? This is the list that we go back to, because this is the voices of schools' principals walking through. And at St. Charles, I remember when they said, the bulb, Shelley, wasn't it? The bulb here in this auditorium was like, whatever it is, and needed to be changed or whatever. And so, they create their prioritized list, and then we go through. So, anytime we do have end-of-year funding, this is the list we go back to, because these are schools saying, here are some things that we really need. And from time to time, as, like I'll say, Mike Heim in his budget, as he, as something, maybe he's got some flexible funding at any time, he'll go back to this list. So, this list, I'm glad that you brought it up, is actually pretty important for us, because we go back and try to figure out, how do we prioritize handling some of the issues that the schools also bubble up? It's not just the system, but also the schools.
Thank you for that. And then I had one final question. We were talking about class size. So, I know, Dr. Navarro, you said, you know, the current ratio is one to thirty, but that's not necessarily all class sizes. Do we have an average of class sizes? Because I feel like that will put it more in perspective, because when we hear the ratio, right, we're like, okay, that's the number that is set. But when I'm hearing you say that's not always the case, then I feel like the average class I might, my, class size might be more helpful in really getting a better picture of what our classrooms look like. So, are you able to get that information for, or you know already?
No, so, I am happy to provide you, going back to basic statistics, the mean and then the mode. The mode is the most current likely numbers of classes. Again, if you've ever done master scheduling at the secondary level, kids don't partition themselves in perfect thirties or twenty-eights or whatever that is. So, we do have classes, and then we have like, there are kids that are taking Latin III, and there's only a certain number of kids. So, what I can do is I can show you by the grade levels that we're looking at, what is the mean, the average class size? What's the mode? What are the most ones? And then the other thing I did want to put out there is that there are certain classes that we, that the staffing is lower because they're specialized classes, whether they are special ed or they are in a specific CTE program that we won't touch. So, yes, trust me, I, you know, changing boundaries, increasing class sizes, and changing report cards never gets us any friends in our parents. And most of us have kids here in the, in the, on the, in our schools anyway, so we understand that and we live that. So, we try to make some suggestions that would have the least impact in this budget. But I will give, I'm sorry, but I will give it to you, I will make sure you have it and it's posted for the next time we meet.
Thank you, Dr. Navarro. Anybody, yep, Ms. Butler Washington?
Thank you, ma'am chair. Just to go back to the farms' numbers, I wanted to ask, because I don't know if it's, what's the regulation here in Maryland is, but I know in Georgia, every, the policy was that every parent had to fill out that form. Whether you qualify, you thought you did, you knew you was going to do it, you had to do it. And that was a policy that the, the school board did. And now I understand why they did it, because they know the money number, and they don't want to go beneath the price, the, the numbers that could hurt them. So, here in Maryland, since I don't know the, the ruling, is that something that could be inquired from the, from the school board to put a policy in to do that?
So, we do have that policy. The issue is the CEP schools, we can't require the parents to do it. So, if it's not a CEP school, now, I mean, we, you know, we stress and send home multiple announcements and try to get people to, to do it in the non-CEP, but the CEP schools, we're not allowed to ask them for it.
Okay, so that's a law then?
Or, or a regulation.
Regulation, okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Ms. Thomas? And then Ms., Dr. Small?
Thanks so much for that. I, I wanted to also ask about the farms, because I know, Ms. Acton, there are two surveys, correct? There's one if you're a federal employee working, aren't there two surveys that have to be sent out like that, that, that give us funding?
Yeah, you're talking about Impact Aid, yep.
Right. Right, but, but one of them is also if you, if you are, if you work on
Military.
Federal property within the state of Maryland, right? And so, I, I know that those both come with a funding tail, if we can encourage parents to complete those surveys. So, not for, not for this conversation, but perhaps there's another way that we can work through soliciting parents to understand the importance of completing those surveys and have some sort of campaign. I mean, I remember when I was a parent, and I would get four of them, right? Because I have four kids, and I would be like, I filled out one, I already filled out one, like. But I do think that if we can try to encourage parents and they can see how it can help the school system, maybe we need to. Ms. Mackey's great with coming up with campaigns to get parents to do, I think that might be a good idea. But I do have one question, is it, is it a one-time shot? Like, is there a window that if it's not completed, we don't get the funding, or just whenever they do it?
Yes, so we have to notify, I think it's October thirtieth is the, the date that we give the information to MSDE. So, as a parent, though, they can fill that form out at any point, which would, at least at that point, get them on, on the registers for the following year, and also so that we stop billing them for lunches and breakfast if they qualify. But yes, we've already missed that, that window for, for this funding.
So, perhaps there's just a way we could educate parents about filling the form out, yes, they need to do it, but also that window. And then, once they fill it out, what happens the next year? Do you have to fill it out again? Because someone might think, I filled it out when my child was in first grade, and now they're in fifth grade. I don't need to do it anymore because they already have my information. So, just trying to inform parents because it would be helpful. Thank you.
Dr. Small?
On the budget reductions, I've noticed that the first thing was early child, early learning center, the startup call. So, what does that, you know, how will that affect that center? And I noticed it was number one.
So, we have already opened the early learning center. So, that was part of our budget request last year. And because our funding fell short, we looked in, in our budget to see if we had any opportunities to save money, anticipating, as Dr. Navarro said, that we were going to get more blueprint funding this year than we did last year. So, we took, we reallocated money from, from our budget last year to open up the ELC. So, it's open, and now we need to put it into our operating budget to continue to fund it. The items that we reallocated last year have to be put back in the budget this year. You know, they're necessary items. It was a one-time savings that we had last year to, to be able to fund it.
Okay, so you're, okay.
It was funded.
Okay, I was, okay, okay.
So, just to kind of piggyback on that, the first two items, the two hundred and fifty for ELC, and then the three sixty-two for TV production equipment, kind of going back to the list that Dr. Navarro was talking about. If the county sees items that are one-time hits, they will give us additional funding. It's a one-time funding, it doesn't get factored into maintenance of effort. So, the county said, yes, we'll fund you for some startup calls for ELC, that was two hundred and fifty, but we don't get that again the next year, so we have to take it off. Same thing for the three sixty-two, they gave us one-time money to redo the TV production for, to make the board meetings better, but we have to take that off the next year, because it's a one-time hit from them.
Does that make sense, Dr. Small? Too good, okay. Ms. Smith?
Yes, just a brief point of clarification. You can see I don't use a mic every single day, because I keep, continue to struggle. So, in terms of, before we launch a kind of countywide, kind of parental push to complete the farms' form, as well as the Impact Aid form, I know that in the different schools, there is a sort of a school or a local approach to getting parents to complete the form. Whether it's, you know, we're going to offer something to the children, like if you bring your form back by the end of the week, you know, this is a special incentive that the class may get or the grade may get. So, students are really encouraging their parents, like, you've got to turn this around, because my entire class may get something, or my grade may get something, or the school gets something. So, there are kind of individualized approaches, but totally hear the concern around, like, our parents, where they have to fill it out every single year. I've also heard Dr. Navarro say in years past, that for the farms' form, it's not just for those who believe they qualify for free and reduced lunch. It is also an opportunity for us to look at the income gaps within our, our county, also looking at the different areas where there may be like super high incomes versus, you know, other disparities. So, it's not just an opportunity to find ways of funding and supporting, you know, those who need support for, you know, breakfast and lunch, but it's also an opportunity to kind of look at income and wage gaps, like throughout the county, and figuring out where those large disparities are. Dr. Navarro, correct me if I said that incorrectly, but I think that's what you've said in years past. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Anybody else who hasn't had an opportunity? Is that Ms. Warren? Go ahead, Ms. Warren.
Good evening. Quick question, I, I just wanted to know about, well, where would, like, I guess, teacher supplies and stuff like that come in? Because I've heard parents that are concerned about, well, their teachers would ask, you know, could they help to, you know, I guess, provide resources to the classroom and stuff like that? Where would, I, I heard you mention earlier that each school gets a budget, and I think that's going to be decreased. So, does that, obviously, that would impact teacher supplies and their needs, so where does that fall?
So, the school-based budgets are based off of the enrollment at the schools. So, you're receiving X number of dollars based on how many kids you have in the, in your school, so that may change year over year. But that's not really a reduction here. We kind of take that, there's like a pool of money, and then we'll look at how many kids, and then we'll determine how much each school gets based on the number of kids that they have.
I, I believe last year, in our last year's budget, we increased that per pupil just slightly, because we got a lot of information saying we needed more for supplies, because paper has gone up, crayons have gone up, every glue has gone up. So, last year, we increased the per pupil, thank you, the per pupil allocation. I think I, if I remember, if I memorize Sherri's budget, she did increase a little bit. We didn't do that this year, but we did last year based on a couple of years of just inflation cost. And then, as Sherri mentioned, it's just how many, what's your enrollment, and then you get the per pupil allocation based on your enrollment.
Thank you. So, when that money, and this probably maybe be another conversation for another day, but when supplies runs out, that's up to the school principal or the teacher to kind of?
So, the, so the principal has that allocation, and the, the superintendent sees on a monthly basis. And actually, the finance subcommittee of the board will see these reports as well. And it actually, Sherri actually publishes a month-to-month expenditure. I have yet to see a school run out of money, and I don't know if any principal's listening, but I have yet to see a principal run out of money as we get closer to the summer breaks, as they use them. There's a lot of conversations around supply list and, and how people order it. I would say, we advise principals to ask their different departments every year what their needs are, and then understand that they need to have a cycle of rotations for special purposes. So, I'll give you a great example. For PE, you may have a year where equipment, certain equipment that costs more may need to be purchased. But then, as a principal, you need to say, okay, this was the year where we purchased this heavy PE equipment, and so the ratio may not be equal every year to every department. And then the following year might be the science department, a couple of microscopes needed to, well, I think microscopes are actually purchased centrally, but a couple of other materials needed to be purchased, so it might be a little bit of a bump. What I always suggest principals to do is just get in, get in writing from your departments what the asks are, know what your budget is per pupil, and then look at these, the cyclical rotations of major expenses, which every department is going to have, as you make those determinations, and know that if you bought the bulbs for the projector, for this screen, for the art department, you know they're going to last you a couple of years, and then maybe you can focus on the language arts requests if they have a big ask and so forth. And I think that's kind of the work that, that the principals do locally.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, and I just wanted to clarify, I didn't say run, I didn't mean run out of money, but I meant like materials. Just want to make sure, but thank you for, that's clear, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Warren. Well, I think that's all of our questions. Thank you to my colleagues for the discussion, and Ms. Fisher Davis and Ms. Acton and Dr. Navarro for answering all of our questions. We're a little bit ahead, board members, so pat yourselves on the back. So, we have a recess until six PM for public forum. So, Kyle, if you want to take us off? Thank you, we'll be back at six.
Alright, good evening, we're back. Mr. Schwartz, do we have anybody signed up for public forum?
No.
Okay, alright. Moving along in our agenda, the last thing that we have, board members, is a discussion about, or selection, rather, for our February Board Town Hall topic. So, I'll open the floor, I think board members, if you have some ideas or thoughts on what the topic should be, I will open the floor. Ms. Thomas?
Thank you, Vice Chair. Did we have the list that we last, was it last meeting we came up with the list? We had four topics, I think, that we came up with, and one, we were wordsmithing the topic, do you remember?
We were talking, we've talked about it, but not in public yet, and so that's why, you know, we needed to bring it forward today. I can refresh, if, if someone wants to go and refresh, I think Ms. Warren had a good idea. If not, I'm happy to kind of refresh everybody on what we had previously discussed. Can you give her the mic, Ms. Thomas?
I'm sorry. I think we were talking about our students, our school, our community, something like that.
Something around engagement and like key stakeholders and things like that?
Yes, something around unifying the school, the community, parents, teachers, you know.
Absolutely. Anyone else have any? Ms. Smith?
Why, thank you. I'm not certain if this is a sort of town hall topic, but I can say that we know that the majority of the folks who live in Charles County work outside of the county, whether it be in DC or whether it be in Virginia. And there's a good number of our parents who are also federal employees. And given the executive order from the president to return to work, getting a sense of, there's going to be a large impact, of course, on childcare. And we know that, you know, while you're working, you're not supposed to be taking care of your child, but just noting, parents have been home for a number of years, have been able to, you know, get their child off the bus. We also know a variety of after-school programs and before-school programs have closed since the pandemic. So, being thoughtful about, is there any response or anything we as a school system can do to help alleviate the, the very real concern and the very real impact of parents having to leave the county between six and nine AM in the morning, and being unable to return until three to seven in the evening, and being, you know, unable to get their child off the bus, unable to go to after-school program, unable to kind of, you know, help their kid move around the county, or even be home to get their children. But noting that, again, we've, many of those businesses have closed up. So, is there anything that we as a school system can do, or can we field a conversation?
So, in terms of maybe, just for clarification, like community resources, maybe that are available for childcare, after-school programs, sort of like a list of resources you're looking for, maybe, Ms. Smith, or?
That's a, I'm still sort of thinking through it as I'm talking. Just noting that I'm hearing, you know, definitely online, I'm hearing definitely from constituents that this is a very real concern. And trying to, they're not necessarily sure where to go or who can help them kind of think this through. This is obviously a family issue, but thinking about the community that we've built here in Charles County, is there any way? And maybe it is a resource list, maybe it is a conversation around, you know, the school system's working with different vendors, perhaps open up more seats, I'm not certain. I'm just sort of spitballing and throwing ideas out there, but just noting this is, I mean, it's fresh, like it just was issued, you know, Thursday and Friday of last week. But there are definitely lots of parents and households that are reeling and trying to figure out like what their next move is to make sure that their child is safe while they will be away from Charles County for, you know, extended hours. So, if we could just think that through, maybe it's a list, maybe it's a conversation, maybe it's something else, but if we can just think that through and be able to provide the community something.
Definitely. Okay. Mr. Burke?
Thank you. I think college and career readiness would be a good topic because it's something that we've been trying to make advancements in, in terms of, you know, we have our three-legged stool. We've, we're introducing plans to have more CTEs and move CTEs around and with APs with, now, we have IB programs in the mix in, in our future plans. I'd like to see if it's possible to get community input on, on that entire aspect, whether it's preparing for college, college applications, e- even scholarships, just making sure we can hear, hear the community on that. You know, as a senior in high school, that's a topic that's really close to me and, and for some people, that comes with a lot of confusion. And there have been a lot of resources that have helped me out. And if we can have that conversation between our, our leaders and community members on, here is what you should do, you know, regardless of where your child is, whether they're in elementary school or middle school or high school, to prepare for the process. Because if, if you're not prepared, it hits you like a truck, you know, in, in senior year. So, that, I think, would be a good conversation for, for a town hall.
Thank you, Mr. Burke. Ms. Butler Washington?
Yes. Thank you, ma'am chair. Just for, in light of what's going on, I think a good topic would be for the school where the ICE is coming into schools, places of business for parents and stuff, and just showing support and letting the parents know exactly what we are prepared to do and giving them information. We can ask, they can ask us questions on how and, and what they need from us. And you can, we can inform them of, they need like two or three people on the list besides just them, just in case something happened. Just, you know, showing support of what in light is what's going on for our school system.
Ms. Brenda Thomas?
I wonder if we can touch base back on the security of some of the incidents that are happening in school and they always the same thing over and over again, so we can address it again. I wonder if we can go back to that topic?
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Samicia Thomas, did you have your hand up?
I did. Excuse me. I wanted to expound upon Ms. Smith's. I think just asking the question of what the parents may need, I think soliciting the feedback because Dr. Navarro has used this term and I think we should continue to try to float that in the community, which is parent partner. There are some parents that don't have to go back in, that are still remote. They may have resources, you know, family resources. You know, you may have that person on your street who can get the kids off the bus or look, look out for kids, but I think having the conversation, because there seems to be a lot of just unrest about what, what to do with, with students that are field trips and even just our parent engagement. Right now, the parent engagement that we have been doing is predicated off the fact that parents have more flexibility and I think that flexibility is going to wane. And then, how do we continue to support parents, like, these six o'clock meetings? You know, we will see less participation than we have and we may just even see less participation in other things because of the now requirement that people have to go in. So, I do think it's, that's a good topic. And even if we don't do it as a form, perhaps as a way, we can just solicit what parents' needs are and then, work with our community partners to perhaps partner them with parents. Thank you.
Ms. Warren?
I think maybe this, when you were talking about parents, what about a PTO presentation or something? I don't know that we just focus solely focus on the parent-teacher association, associations at the different schools, like tying that in, pulling that in? Because I know we have some new ones, I believe. So, maybe we could hone in on that.
Maybe like that could be?
That could be the topic, like, you know, maybe, well, we probably want to recruit some parents, I'm sure. They, they, the organizations probably would appreciate that. But maybe to just bring awareness about the PTOs again and highlight all of the things that we've been discussing here, maybe? Kind of pull it all together.
So, that's what I'm thinking, Ms. Warren. I'm hearing like kind of a theme going in terms of like resources for parents and families.
Partnerships with parents, parent partnering.
So, trying to bring us all together on that or everyone's suggestions, maybe something, Dr. Navarro, see if you're following with me, tracking with me here. Maybe kind of what we were talking about with the stakeholder engagement, right? Parent resources, who do you go to for what? Highlight PTOs. This is a good resource for A, B, C. You know, if you need childcare resources, maybe these are your partners or who to talk to in your school to find out about that. And maybe even to Mr. Burke's point about college and career, each school, you know, at the middle and high school level has, you know, a college and career counselor, you know, these kind of things. I'm thinking maybe we could kind of pull most of these together in sort of a resource engagement-type forum. Mr. Hancock, did you have a comment or suggestion?
Just something to add to that if I could. So, I, I think that's a great idea to tie everything together. And if we're going to be tying things together, I think we shouldn't overlook the, something that stands out a lot to me, and I, I mentioned it earlier, the, the amount of vaping that takes place in our bathrooms. We need help from the parents to stop that and to drive home to, to the parents that, that, you know, there are students that have access to vaping devices and they have access to THC oil and marijuana and it's being used rapidly in our school bathrooms. And we need the parents' help, the community's help to stop that. I just would like to have that added in there as well because it just seems like it's, it's getting more and more prevalent. Thank you.
So, maybe, as you were talking, Mr. Hancock, I was thinking about, like, maybe somewhere along the lines, Dr. Navarro, of like, here are some of the, the resources available within the school. Here's some of the things we can do for you and then, maybe here's some of the things we would like to ask for you to partner with us. Hold on, I'm seeing some head shake. Does that sound good? And Ms. Smith, did you have a comment or another suggestion?
No. Well, one to double down on sort of the compilation of all the ideas under the parent engagement umbrella. Also thought, for a town hall, does it necessarily have to be the school system all the time delivering the information? If we were to have a nonprofit partner or an expert partner come in and just do a 10, 15-minute kind of overview of parent engagement and the importance of it generally in education? And then, we can kind of launch into all of the other aspects of the presentation. But just giving, you know, the audience, not the audience, but like our parents and community the opportunity to hear from, like, perhaps national or local experts on the topic of family engagement and why it's so critical to their child's education. So, it's not just us sort of constantly having that message of, "We need you, we need you, we have to partner, we have to work together," but it's really perhaps hearing from someone else that can speak to the benefit to children generally.
Yeah, and I think it would be a two-way too, Ms. Smith. You know, like, here are a lot of the things that the school offers, right? PTOs, your college and career counselors, this is what they can help you with if you have a college junior or senior, you know. Like I said, child, you know, childcare, about the topic that you brought up before. Like, these are all the things that the school has available to you because that's something else we hear, right? Parents will say a lot of times, "I, we need, I need this," or "What about the school offering this?" And we're like, "Oh, we do have that," but they don't know, they're not aware, you know. Or maybe one school has something that another school may not necessarily have or it may not be the same, you know, might be something similar. So, yeah, like, making it a two, obviously, it's a partnership, right? So, we want to make sure we're saying, "We're going to, you know, these are all the things that we want to offer, you know, in this partnership." And then, in turn, these are some of the things that would help us to be able to help you, you know, better. Okay. Ms., Dr. Small, did you have a comment?
Just wanting to be able to provide that emotional support also because they need that as well, especially the parents who are going through whatever that looks like. So, it's, it's wonderful to provide all these other things, but just having a resource that they can be able to reach out for that emotional support at this time.
Yep. That's great, Dr. Smalls. And that, that is something I think we could incorporate, right, as a resource, right? Because we have a number of mental health resources, social-emotional learning programs in the school. I know this is a lot of things. Dr. Navarro?
It is.
I want to hear your comments on, I was just trying to tie everything that everybody's suggesting together. I know it's a lot and if we can and we need to break it up, definitely open to hearing that. So, what are your thoughts, Dr. Navarro?
So, I think we, I like the idea of this resources for families. We did a little bit of this at the state of the schools. Who do you go to? What is a PPW? What's a council? What's the difference between the two of them? When do I call a council? When do I call a PPW? What, what's the benefit of me being part of my PTO? And, and, and we can do a whole thing on, who's my career counselor? Are they in middle school? What do they do? What happens in sixth grade? What I am envisioning also is the opportunity, the town halls have also been the opportunity for parents to ask us questions in whatever is pressing for them or for them to come forward and say, "This is something that I have concerns about that are still not addressed," sometimes very localized. So, and I like the idea of bringing, we don't, CCPS stuff doesn't always have to be the presenter in the room. I like that idea. It is on February 4th, which is tomorrow. So, if, if the board is okay, I, I like to talk to my folks. I like to talk to Tracy and, and, and staff, both in Dr. Jones and Mr. Lowndes's shop and try to narrow down something that we could present quickly and, and, and get, and put out there as resources that parents can go a little deeper in. Our communications people always tell us, not a lot of texts, a lot of graphics, a lot of things that you can click into, that you can, you know, you can go into and find out more. And then, the other thing is, I think the board has limited us to doing a presentation that's no more than 10 or 15 minutes and then, really allowing the public to break, to come forward. And so, we can also ask the public if there's other things that they would like us to engage in as well. But we can definitely hit some of these positions and people in schools that, that, that are underutilized. This issue, there are some other issues that I think need to be a county conversation and I'm taking some notes for Tracy Chapilary, who is our community engagement and partnerships because as people have to go back to work in person and what that does for a lot of families who've had more flexibility being able to be at home, that can be a full county discussion. I don't think it's just the school system. There's a discussion around opportunities and expansions. So, I think there's definitely those pieces. And so, I, I would say that we would probably try to narrow down some of these things. I think a lot of our families, to Dr. Small's point, don't know that we, we run counseling circles and, and groups for children going through the death of a family member, divorce or separation. There's a lot of different reasons why we do that. And then, sometimes we also do first aid mental health training for, for family members, not just parents, but family members to support some behaviors. And we can definitely queue up all those opportunities. So, it becomes a family resource place where families can quickly scroll down, look for it and click on the areas that they're most interested in, at least as, as a beginning part. And I know, and just for clarifica, clarification and a reminder to our community, Ms. Kramer, this is going to be a virtual event as well. Yeah.
Thank you, Dr. Navarro. So, I think that sounds like we can bring the majority of the topics that were brought up kind of into one sort of resource night for, for families. Does that sound good, board members? Okay. Mr. Schwartz, we need to take an official vote on this? Yeah. I have the consensus, right? Nobody's opposed? Okay. Perfect. And yeah, just reminder, again, as Dr. Navarro said, it's a virtual town hall. It begins at 7:00 PM and then typically, Ms. Mackey will request for questions ahead of time. Correct?
We did do a, a question that once we, she's writing down what the title is going to be and I'm sure it'll sound better than just the laundry list that we went through. She's going to put it out in social media and she'll request people to send us ahead-of-time questions. And then, just as a reminder, the questions will also go in the chat when we go live, right, Chelle? So that she will then monitor those and, and bring them back out to the, to the board.
Right. And then, for the community, you don't, you know, if you don't submit a question in advance, you can still engage and submit questions at the virtual town hall that evening. So, I think that sounds good. All right. Board members, well, that was all that we had on our work session agenda. So, if anyone would like, Ms. Smith, did you have an additional?
Just one quick reminder that the majority of us will be coming back from MAB on February 4th. I believe we should be in some respective place where we can join virtually, but that's the last day of our legislative conference.
It is. I think it, that Tuesday, it ends early, though, I think, if I remember correctly. But you're correct. Our, we're jam-packed, we're bumper to bumper, as Dr. Navarro says. So, we'll be just coming back from the Equity and Advocacy Institute. Yep. So, thank you for that reminder, Ms. Smith. So, yes, for everyone that is attending, you know, for your scheduling purposes, just, you know, keep that in mind. It is later, though. It's at 7:00 PM, so hopefully, you'll be able to be at least home by then, hopefully, or somewhere that you can sit down. So, all right. I will take a motion to adjourn if, or you have another? All right. Thank you, Ms. Thomas. Seconded by Ms. Warren. I know, Ms. Brenda Thomas, you were, you were slacking today. Oh, okay, okay. So, Ms. Samicia Thomas and seconded by Ms. Warren. All those in favor? All right. Have a good evening, everyone. Kyle, you can take us off.